Do I have our pledge in long silence?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rush County Schools Vision Statement is chief to achieve personal excellence through a wide range of educational opportunities and opportunities. I'd like to welcome everybody. Mr. Jamison, is there any public comment?
Mr. President, there was no request for public comments this month.
Okay. Someone to tell me something good.
Mrs. Maskin, Principal Mr. Benson from Arlington Elementary.
Good evening. Unfortunately, our Staff Member of the Month is not feeling well and wasn't able to be here this evening. But I did want to real quickly recognize Mrs. Heather Grimmy. She was nominated by several of her peers. And some of the things that they said about her is that she is dedicated to each student, she is kind and positive, she puts kids first. She doesn't settle but keeps striving to be better. She makes connections with students and she is thoughtful and reflective. So I did want to make sure that we recognized her. We are blessed to have her for sure. Now I'll let Mr. Benson tell you about this wonderful young man.
All right, I'm proud to introduce Mr. Colby Smith. He is our Student of the Month. Colby is in Mrs. Ag's third grade class and he's just an incredible role model to everybody at our school. Colby exemplifies our Wildcat way in so many ways. He's responsible, respectful, works hard, and he's one of the kindest humans I think I've ever come across. He's always quick to greet adults and peers with a friendly smile. I know he's brightened a lot of my bad days just by talking to him. Mrs. Ag had this to say. Colby's a role model student. He was the first to pass his addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division facts in his class. He's also passed a total of eighty-eight lessons on his island path with ninety-five percent accuracy. He loves to read and write in his journal. His handwriting is remarkable. He has a growth mindset. When he has to rework a problem or question, he doesn't get upset but ask how he can make it better. I think the comment that sums him up the best is Mrs. Ag said, "He's trustworthy, friendly, and very caring. He loves to be helpful and he looks out for the well-being of others." She loves having Colby in his class. Congratulations, Colby. We're honored to have you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson, Millroy Elementary.
Good evening. So I want to recognize first our Student of the Month, and that is Audrey Morgan. Audrey, come on up. So Audrey is a fourth grader at Millroy. And when I visit her classroom, there you go, go right here. When I visit her classroom, she's always on task and she really works hard on everything she does. Her teacher this year, Mrs. French, said, "I'm proud to nominate Audrey Morgan for Millroy Student of the Month. Audrey gives her personal best in everything she does. She's a wonderful role model for her peers and is one of the most respected students I've ever had. She's a natural leader and kind to others. Audrey demonstrates honesty and integrity daily by always doing the right thing even when no one is looking. She puts her full effort into pushing herself academically and is always striving to learn more. Audrey has a great personality and is such a pleasure to have in the classroom this year. With her level of leadership, integrity, and effort, I'm confident she will continue to excel in all she does." Congratulations, Audrey. So our Employee of the Month is Ms. Cara Banks. So Cara was nominated by several staff members. And she actually does a little bit of everything for us at Millroy. She's positive and such an asset to our staff. She's our library assistant, but that's not all. This year, she has agreed to teach music for us. I think it's, it was, it was agreed, you agree, yeah. But, and she does a phenomenal job. I would never ask somebody to do that if they weren't talented like she is, but she is. She loves the kids. Not only does she keep busy in the library and music, she's also our unified robotics sponsor. She took six of our students to the competition a few weeks ago at Taylor University in November, and the kids did a great job. I was amazed at how calm she remains in stressful situations because I was not as calm as she was, and she was just like, "All right, I'll be fine." But that's enough. She's also our spell bowl and math bowl coach. And she's just an overall go-to person. She does our corporation newsletter for us, and I could probably go on and on and on. So we are so fortunate to have Ms. Banks, and she's a very special employee.
Mrs. Ennis, Rushville Elementary.
Blaze, you want to come on up? So I'm going to introduce our Student of the Month first. Blaze is in second grade. And when I, I called him down to the office, I said, "You're not in trouble, but let's play a trick on Dad." And call and say, "The principal's calling and we're in trouble." And he looked at me and he said, "I've never been in trouble." And that was true. I was like, "Okay, did get it." But you enjoy that phone call, didn't you? So this is from his teacher. "Blaze worked harder than anyone in the class at setting examples, following directions, and staying on task. He is also very kind and shows compassion for friends in his class. For example, at recess last week, a friend hurt their foot and needed to go to the nurse. The student wasn't exactly sure how to get to the nurse, so I sent Blaze with the student to the nurse, and Blaze offered support by wrapping his friend's arm around his shoulder, so Blaze took some weight off. He has a heart of gold and strives to always do the right thing." And I don't know, it might be, what, what do you want to be when you grow up?
A soccer player.
A soccer player. Alrighty. So our Employee of the Month, Ms. Moon, would you like to come forward to be recognized? Natalie is a first-year teacher for Rush County Schools and was nominated by several staff members. Natalie is a problem solver and a go-getter. She's originally from Sunny, California, where she graduated from high school and made her way to Xavier University, graduating with a business degree. I'm not sure why she left California to come here on a day like today. Business wasn't exciting enough for her, so she decided to complete her master's in special education from Xavier as well. And boy, are we glad that she decided to join us. She's a hard worker, she doesn't give up. She has a passion for teaching and advocates for students' needs. She has a passion for students and helping them learn. She's patient, she's caring. She has stepped up to the plate to take on responsibilities of a colleague who actually nominated her for this award. So thank you so much and congratulations.
I don't see Mr. Powers, so we'll just go ahead with Mr. Cook.
Alright. So we are lucky enough, we are going to recognize two students this time because again, one of our students got selected as WCC Student of the Month. So Madison, if you want to come on up over next to Mr. Cook over there. So I just want to share the reason that Madison is the WCC Student of the Month. So this is from her WCC teacher. "Madison goes above and beyond, not only at WCC, but during her field experience at Rushville Elementary School. While at WCC, she is a model student and leader. This is her second year serving as student representative at WCC. She has volunteered her time to help with various WCC events and volunteered at the annual Night to Shine prom for special needs adults. Maddie has a big heart and a true passion for children. While in her field experience, teachers report she exhibits professionalism, takes initiative, is flexible, and has built a positive rapport with those students and staff. We are so excited that she is representing Rushville High School at WCC and being recognized for that."
I have the pleasure of introducing our Staff Member of the Month, Ms. Omeron Kimpel. I will let her do her walk down the red carpet. So I have had the opportunity to be in Omeron's classroom a few times the past few weeks. And the first time I was in there, they did old-fashioned like board relays, except for it was an actual sprint. The kid would sprint to the board and sprint back. And they all loved it. And I was like, "I wish I had teachers that did that." But they, they just love your class, they learn with such enthusiasm. It's always a lot of fun to watch your class. And we actually had the students nominate Staff Member of the Month this month. And Ms. Kimpel by far had the most nominations from students and staff members. So I'd like to read really quickly just one of the students, what they said about Ms. Kimpel. "Ms. Kimpel is my pick for Teacher of the Month. She puts a lot of effort into classes and she teaches three different levels of Spanish. She makes learning fun and has games prepared to make learning easier and more enjoyable. We recently did a breakout box to practice our Spanish. I have no idea what that is, but it sounds great." "She also makes an effort to get nutrition lessons in Zumba in the classroom with Tony Campbell. I really enjoy her class. She is a great teacher and very deserving of Teacher of the Month." So congratulations. And we're not asking because Ms. Kimpel was the first one to nominate our Student of the Month that we're about to introduce. We're going to let her introduce our Student of the Month.
They gave you too many jobs.
He said I couldn't speak at the same time.
So I nominated Eduardo Quintana as our... So Eduardo, or we know him as Lalo, as you can see, he's a clown. So besides being a clown, I nominated it because he, he has worked, I'm going to read what I wrote. He has worked so hard for the past, for the past four years at the high school. Actually, I've known him since he was in preschool. And he has worked so hard his whole life. And it is beautiful to see him at school. His hard work at school has paid off. He was accepted to the University of Indianapolis and was awarded the Dean Scholarship because of his academics. Lalo is also a kind student that advocates for others. He makes our international students feel welcome in our community. He greets everyone with a smile on his face. He's also a good leader. He participates in international club, chess club, and band. At band, he's a section leader. During trunk or treat, he goes above and beyond, decorating his car because he wants the little kids to have a great experience. And I just can go on and on and on about Lalo. He is an amazing, amazing young man. Congratulations.
Santa! Oh my God!
If you know Santa! Santa! Santa's here! Santa's coming! Put your hands together for Santa! Merry Christmas!
My friend, my friend! Santa!
Absolutely. We have a lot of good boys and girls in this room.
Do we have gifts for them?
Except for a few.
Oh, okay. We can't wait to hand those out, except for the few. Because they're probably from the South Pole.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, let's see what we have. Did you bring candy cane, Santa?
I did, candy cane.
There you go. There you go. There you go. You're welcome. Here you go, absolutely. Hi, everybody! Hi! Hello! Ho, ho, ho! Awesome. Do you have more for me, Santa?
I do have more for you.
All right, thank you. Santa, we got to move quick, Santa.
We're trying, Santa's old.
Well, you're welcome. You must be from the North Pole. You look familiar. You must... Santa?
Uh huh.
Santa, I think we know her. I think she's from the North Pole. She must be one of my friends.
She's been a good little girl.
You're one of the good elves, okay. Thank you. We will. Do you have more?
Yes, I got plenty.
Oh, good. Good, funny. Here you go. Miss, hey, hey, I found one of my other friends.
Oh, that's Josh Campbell.
We're gonna, ooh, here you go.
Merry Christmas.
Very good.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, I'm dropping a candy cane.
Hey, Santa, Santa, hurry! Hurry, one of my really important friends needs some candy.
You're so welcome.
Ooh, I think I found something.
Yes.
Is this her favorite?
Yeah.
Pretty sure?
Pretty sure. He's been real good this year.
What's Mr. Jamison get?
Jamison gets a Snickers. Ms. Jackman's gonna get a Reese's.
Okay.
Mr. Seifert's also getting a Snickers.
Ooh, okay.
We also know on Mr. Jamison's turn, he gets a Betty White.
What about, what about Mr. President here?
Mr. President gets a payday. Which is spinning.
He's very pretty. Ooh, Mr. Banks?
Mr. Banks, Mr. Banks gets a heat bar. And Mr. Longa gets a Reese's.
There you go. What else?
Mr. Kirby gets a Reese's.
I like it. There you go.
And a Butterfinger for Mrs. King.
Okay.
And a Snickers.
And the person, and the person who takes care of all the gems and the air and the heat and makes sure all the lights are on.
We have zero complaints about him this year.
Get a Snickers. Now, we said we had a friend here, right?
Yes.
Josh Campbell, come here! Come on! Come on, hurry, hurry, hurry. I heard that a friend of mine, Mr. Wise, said Josh does a tremendous job as a student in his classroom. He says you're always very attentive, you're engaged. What's engaged? I'm just buddy. What's engaged?
He is with it every day, studying, doing everything he should.
And he's a terrific role model, like Mr. Peters and the rest of the board.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We appreciate you being so mature and working. Come and get a picture with us. Come and get a picture. Now, before we leave, we don't want to leave anybody out.
That's right.
We don't, we... First of all, let's give you a nice... What do you have, what do you have for Mr. Joshua? Josh or Joshua? Josh, okay. Here you go, buddy. Enjoy. Enjoy. We have three more people, right?
Yes, we do have...
I heard they sit on the throne of lies. Especially this one. He must be the angry elf. He must be from the South Pole.
Yes, he is, buddy.
So you know what? Here, get some coal. You know what? Get some more coal.
Don't feel left out.
One more, one more. I'm sorry you're associated with these two. There you go. Bye, everybody!
Merry Christmas! We told them to up their game.
They upped.
It took them two months to plant it.
And Christmas, how easy.
Yeah, we were nice.
You got an F for rolling up that...
Mr. President, Board Member comments.
Ms. Jackman?
Just, uh, all the programs getting ready to go on. And I know all the kids are excited about everything and getting ready and holding on till the end of the year.
I'm rarely a loss for words, but I follow that. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Please keep Anna Jo Richardson your boss. Staff member, that's a wonderful person. And her and her son need all of our help and efforts and prayers over this next few months.
Please, with how things are going, I... Board meetings are a lot more fun than they used to be. Keep up the good work.
Congratulations, students. Thanks for coming tonight, parents. Great job with your children. Thanks, staff. All the way from California even, that's impressive, coming to Rushville. Thank you all. Also, thanks to all the principals and vice principals that took up their time Saturday morning and came in. It was really good to hear what's going on. We get the broad level stuff of it. But they said and spent time with us, and so I appreciate that. Have a Merry Christmas.
He stole what I was going to say. I was going to say that we had a really great day Saturday meeting with all of the principals. I don't think that we've ever done something like that. And I, I think that it's a, it's a testament to how committed the board is to making this the best place that we can make it and partnering with the administration and not, um, not how it has been in the past where I don't know that it's been such a partner effort. So we appreciate all of you. Have a very Merry Christmas and hope the New Year's brings all the good stuff.
Last one to talk. Everybody says everything I thought of. It was a good Saturday. There were all the principals. Open dialogue was great. I've never seen that. Told Mr. Jamison and Mr. Peters at the end, we have to keep doing something like that. That keeps the open communications that we want as a board. And that will filter all the way through. And that even teaches the kids to be open and honest. So I think we had a pretty good start to 2023. We got the train chugging now, guys. So let's wait until 2024 and keep it going. Thank you to all the students that received awards tonight and staff. So we'll take a five-minute break. Take your pictures. I'm sure the high school principals want a picture of Santa right? We'll take a short break.
Harrison will move on and set items.
Alrighty, Mr. President. Out-of-state field trips and overnight. The RCHS FFA to the FFA Top 25. St. Louis, Missouri, from four-four of 24 to four-five of 24. A charter bus will be used for transportation. Also under donations, fifty dollars from the Sampler Incorporated to the RCHS Lion Pride account. Fifty dollars from Dennis and Sue Herbert to the BMRS FCA Donut Breakfast account. Five hundred dollars from the St. Paul United Methodist Church to the VRMS for school supplies, project boots and coats. Five hundred dollars from Farm Credit to RES for the Christmas aid to families. Two hundred dollars from the Kiwanis Club to the Rush County BMRS Cafeteria Fund to pay for unpaid lunch balances. I seek the board's approval of the minutes, personnel report, donations, and out-of-state field trips, claims, and payroll. Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Sickbert, seconded by Mr. Banks. Then we approve all these things. Do you have any comments? If not, revoke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approval to the change of the board policy, F-225 fundraising and crowd fundraising. With the approval of our state, or excuse me, of our school attorney, we added some language that's a superintendent and/or his or her doesn't need develops administrative guidelines to implement the above policy. We had fundraisers that were taking place without acknowledgement or approval from administration. This policies ensures that all fundraisers have to be approved by the administration before taking place. I seek the board's approval to add this language to our policy.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Jackman, seconded by Mr. Carney. And we approve the fundraising, crowd, change of policy for fundraising and crowdfunding. Is there any discussion?
Do we ever use crowdfunding?
Teachers do.
Do they?
Just stuff was happening without administrator and people always coming out to the principals, so that's why we just want to have approval before the, before any fundraising takes place.
Any more discussion?
How many fundraising events do we have in a year? I guess I heard when my wife is on the board at the Food Factory and they had a RES thing that raised almost sixteen hundred dollars. Just bring it in change. How, how, about how many of those occur a year?
Obviously, the middle school, high school have a lot more with fundraising from each group and organization, sports teams. The elementarys try to not ding and dunk people to death. Probably they have one or two a major year fundraising bid, so it's, it's enough. There's, we also have to be mindset. We can't keep hitting the same people over and over. Businesses and stuff, but a lot of changes. There's been some, you know, that have done bracelets, you know, somebody that's sick. We kind of, by state board of accounts, you can't do that and give money directly to a person that needs to run through the school. That's why they use GoFundMe pages and we just want to kind of throttle this down a little bit so it's not just an open free market.
The business and the community, I think, will accept this and welcome the change.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I see approval of pay raises for non-certified staff. I seek the board's approval of a five percent increase for all Rush County schools, non-certified staff and bus drivers. This was built into last year's budget and also offsets the cost of living increase. This increase will help keep us competitive with surrounding businesses for our employees. I seek your approval.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Toon, seconded by Mrs. Jackman, that we approve a five percent pay increase for non-certified staff. Is there any discussion?
Will take effect January 1.
But would not?
No retro.
No retro.
Last year on January 1, we did their, their increases, so we're staying consistent.
They're typically done calendar year.
Yes, I know.
Okay, if not, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sustain? Aye. Motion carries.
Item D, approval for balancing of appropriations and closing 2023 financial year. It's hard to believe. It's already December. This is a normal and usual recommendation for this time of year. Allowing this makes sure that no line items within a fund end up in the red for the year. We don't see that happening, but this does gives us the ability to do that. So I seek your approval to balance the appropriations for the closing of the 2023 financial year.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Jackman, seconded by Mr. Lyman, that we approve the balancing of appropriations for the closing of 23 financial year. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E on our agenda, the approval of the pre-written claims through the end of December. This is another end-of-the-year bookkeeping approval. This will give us the authority to pay some bills that we will receive through the end of the year. We will be, this will be included in the January claim docket. I seek the board's approval for our pre-written claims through the end of the financial year 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Sickbert, seconded by Mr. Banks, that we approve the claims through the end of the year. Any discussion? If not, we vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
F, ADM count day information. You will see in your handout that I provided for you tonight, that Rush County Schools, October 2023 ADM count was eighteen forty-four, which was down from, down three students from last February. Since October count day, we have increased three students as of today. So, as kids move in and out, we're still shaking, but we are actually in the positive from the October count day. We want that to continue as we look forward to the February 1st count day.
Eighteen forty-four or, because the paper says eighteen eighty-four?
Should be eighteen forty-four. That was my typo there, so eighteen forty-four. I would love for it to be the other, but. Item G is an ESAR review. It's also included in your handout. Provided a breakdown of ESAR dollars. By law, we have to review ESAR funds every quarter. Nancy, Julie, and I have submitted for payment to use up all of ESAR three dollars so that this would free up additional funds in our 2022 GEO bonds. With ESAR federal dollars, there are some stipulations that come with using these funds. For an example, it's the Bacon Davis wages, which is union wages. So all projects have to be done if you use ESAR dollars with that. Many of our projects that we have just gotten completed, we're done with, we're done with Bacon Davis wages. So we paid for a lot of the stuff using ESAR dollars, but freed up other bond money. So, we have that as you can see, ESAR three, we had eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight ninety-two seventy. We have put it in with the state at this time of year. A lot of financial stuff's getting done. We haven't gotten submitted, but the money will be moved over and out of ESAR and into our funds and in paying everything out. So, just, we have to give you, the board, an update on where we're at with ESAR. So we are done with ESAR funds. But we have put about four hundred and sixty-four back into the GEO that we can use to finish out other projects. So, that's, those two reports.
Okay. Important dates. Twenty-second, last day of school, last day of the semester for students. Twenty-fifth, Christmas. Through the twenty, sorry, the twenty-fifth through the fifth of January's Christmas break. January 5th, Teacher Work Day. And January 8th. All starts back up again. Administrator reports.
Mr. Peters?
Well, we had our, well, we brought back the Christmas breakfast for bus drivers this morning. We had some fellowship with them. That went really well. Also, just keep referencing our bus committee meetings. We, we've had a lot of good things come out of that that keeps improving safety and also the, our handbook and other items, just to have some standardization of some processes that we have in central office here. We continue to monitor number of buses, staffing. Thought I might have a couple retirements at Christmas, but somehow I coached them into returning, so that's good. It's good. And all those things impact the number of buses that we have or if we're gonna buy a couple in the future, which all requires money. Lastly, I'd just like to publicly thank Stan and Jamie and Tabitha for their efforts over in Bus Barn. They all play an important role and it's all part of the pieces that make transportation roll. It is one of those, yeah, I snuck that in. It really is an essential function of school that oftentimes gets overblocked. So it needs love too. So appreciate everyone's effort in that department. Custodial-wise, staffing is just always an issue. We had a couple of transfers in the personnel report and that was just to fill holes and gaps. And also, we made those, those moves strategically. And also, we made those moves strategically because of things that we were thinking about in the future. If you know anybody that wants to be a self-custodian or someone that is, wants a retirement gig or anything, we'll talk to qualified people and interview them and try to find a spot. Lastly, maintenance and operations. Again, we're taking a long-term approach, not trying to have Band-Aids so things break again, as I've said before. Just some things going on. New door access system, maintenance regulation of boilers and heat delivery, installation due dishwasher at RES, overhaul that ventilation system. We discovered a mess there, but boiler sections, the ag building have been installed and fixed with longstanding leak, monitoring repair of fire alarm components at the middle school and memorial gym, updated lighting of the exterior of RCHS, both bridges has new LED lighting and soft lights around the perimeter are getting updated. And then lastly, the renovation softball field surface has, is complete with turf and all the fixes. So we're looking at a couple of things there to improve that facility. That's just the short list. So good stuff from my department.
I'd like to thank Mr. Peters for all the work he's done, building those relations with the bus drivers and holding those meetings. It's been very beneficial to what we have been able to accomplish and keep our bus drivers and the work that's being done. And obviously, all the operations that go in, we are not Band-Aiding our facilities. We are fixing our facilities and we're doing it right the first time. So appreciate all your help with that.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we've got a few sick bugs in our other administrator reports. Mrs. Kramer, she's been battling this. She goes home sick, but goes home and works from home. But she apologizes that she is not with us this evening. She is still feeling under the weather and, but still trying to get teacher contracts done because Friday's the big retro pay that's gonna make everybody happy and in the Christmas spirit. And she wants to get that done. She needs to also rest and heal. So she apologizes for not being here with us this evening. Mr. Anderson.
All right, well, we're getting out the word any way we can, but since I have to say it here, get your legs ready. I've been eating a lot of cookies. We still need three special ed teachers. And I've been pretty good this year.
Yeah, you have been pretty good.
Don't ask Mrs. Anderson, but I've been pretty good. We need three special ed teachers. I told you I've been eating a lot of cookies. And we need a speech language teacher, if you could fit her in the bag.
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you. Buddy, we'll even take them from New York City. So, all right. All right, so last week, December 1 count for special education, we had 393 students that were certified. And I want to give a huge thank you to Brevin for helping with that. We learned a lot about our student information system last week. We had to make some corrections in there and we had Brevin, some lady met at a technology meeting, she came in and helped us one night. So we were able to get that completed and that was an increase of eight students over last year. And right now, we're really looking at our special education numbers. They are growing, but we have to be very careful that we're not disproportionate. So we have some things that we need to go through. We feel like every time we have a student in now, they are coming with an IDP. So we have to provide those services and we are. Another thing that we are content, this week, Jamie Julian started for us and she is our new deaf, hard of hearing teacher and also fifth grade special education teacher at RES. So she'll be around and that's all for special ed. And I'm glad I'm one of the few last standing here. That's right. So knock on wood.
Well, next would be Mrs. Schroder, but she actually came in today and had a meeting and then went home sick. And so she apologizes that she's not gonna be with us this evening. And when we talk about doing what's best for kids, Mrs. Winkler is spending time this evening with a student who has, unfortunately, celebrating the anniversary of her father's death. And she felt it was more important to be with that student and spend time with them because a student asked her to. So if that speaks to the quality of staff that we have and the relationships that we build with our students, I don't know how else to put that. And I said, you more, you go be with that student because they asked you. That's, that's pretty important. So just, I just want to say, what a great year. And the people here, we had a lot of fun. That's what education's supposed to be. This is what people want to come and be a part of because we got Santa and Buddy here. So what else could you ask? Mr. Jamison? Yes. I would like to recommend that, starting with January, that we start adding in our Director of Technology, Brevin, to give us a report.
Already in the works.
Okay. He's already sweating about what he's gonna say.
Anything else?
That's all I got, Mr. President.
The board members? Well, thank you for a good year, like I said earlier, and '24 will be even better. So with that...